United States. The public stands one nation under God. Is a bowl with liberty and justice for all.
And if everyone would remain standing for just a moment, please, we'll take a moment of silence for all of our first responders. Thank you very much. Please have a seat. All right. So I'm calling this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, September the 20th, 2022. And letting you know that this meeting is being recorded via Zoom. Under the chairman's report, the board met an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss a legal matter. The pipeline task force, conservancy board and futures committee are all looking for new members. Please reach out to Derek or fill in the ABC volunteer form on our webpage. We do have two public hearings this evening. And so we have an ordinance and possible passage. Of 129 dash E dash 2022, a catchall definition for the. I want district as conditional use. Bill, do you want to take that over?
Madam Chair, would you mind jumping to the emergency services reports for just a moment? We've got a.
A little technical thing. Yes, actually, Brenda, would you come up, please? So we're going to shift things around as a technical issue has come up. And please speak into the mic very clearly, everybody tonight, because Chris needs to hear us clearly on the minutes for YouTube.
Okay, I'd like to start with a statistical report. In the month of August, there were 1,301 calls for service year to date for the three townships was 8,698. To put this in perspective, there was a 21% increase in calls for service when comparing August 2022 to the pre pandemic August of 2019. And a 6% increase in calls for service when comparing year to date data from 2022 to 219, again, a pre pandemic year. East Goshen experienced a 41% increase in calls for service when comparing August 2022 to August 2019. I'm going to skip to the emerging trends because I think that's something people care about. Overnight, there was a break in spree that impacted several municipalities in Chester County, including East Goshen. As a result of what occurred. We had four vehicles stolen. All were unlocked with the keys left inside, which made it easy for the individual to steal the cars. There were 11 or 12 vehicles that were entered, ransacked, and any item of value inside were stolen. All vehicles were unlocked. We're asking residents to check their cameras to see if not only they see the subjects on their camera footage, but more importantly, if they see any vehicles that are moving on the streets during the overnight hours, especially if the registration plate is visible. Where we've caught several videos, like the one individual, the person walked up their driveway, entered their car and stole their car in less than 12 seconds. So it is what it is. We're working with the other townships that were hit. We're trying to develop leads so that we can apprehend the individual or individuals responsible.
Chief, let me just interrupt. Or is there locations, hotspots where these are occurring within our, at least within East Goshen or?
Well, my street, yes. I mean, yeah, we had everything from Barker Drive, Wyndham Lane, Taylor Avenue, Highland Avenue, Grand Oak, Mary Dell. Bancroft. Grand Oak got hit several times and Mary Dell did too.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I had at least six of my neighbors had reached out to me.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they also hit Willis Town and West Goshen, unfortunately. The other two trends that I want to highlight on in East Goshen, rather than just doing my regular report, is we have a problem with check washing. If you've been following our police blotter. I'm trying to see how many times in East Goshen alone. We had. 11 last month in East Goshen alone. And what happens is you put the check out, somebody gets a hold of the check, they wash it for lack of better term, redistribute it. You can use chemicals and one of the things, I don't want to teach how to do this. But one of the things that we see is when you used to have to physically pass a check. But now with electronics, it's easier. You can't see all the detail if somebody has basically washed a check. But what happens is people all of a sudden get notified that they're overdrawn. And when they go back, they find that a check that they issued to like Pico has been issued to someone they don't know in an amount much higher. We are recommending that you definitively do not mail checks from your home mailbox by putting the flag up. We've also found that US Postal Service blue boxes have been hit. And also large post offices have been hit. If you find that you. If it's a small, like for example, I hate to say this, but we found that Thornberry, who has a very small post office, has not had a single crime. Heavily, heavily hit. Yes.
Wow.
So what we're recommending. I'm getting into dangerous ground talking about a postal inspector's investigation. The postal inspectors are working on it. It is not just airport road. There are many, many post offices that are involved or potentially involved. And we're trying to figure out where the crime is being committed. But for a while, we were telling people, just don't put it in your mailbox. And then everybody went out of their way to put it in a blue box or take it into the post office and it still happened. So we're not sure where in the process this is happening. So what we're recommending is that try to use electronic payments as much as possible. And if you find that you do need to issue checks, use a blue gel ink. For some reason, that's harder for them to wash. Blue gel is harder to wash. They've actually found ways to basically wash the ink out and reissue them. Unfortunately, this has turned into a crime trend in pretty much in 30 days, it has gone through the roof. So we're trying to make residents aware before they have to now fight to get their money back. I can't make any guarantees at this point.
What you want to do is put the check in an envelope, put it in the mailbox, put the flag up, and then leave your car there with the doors open and the keys in the car.
Good heavens, awful.
So, yeah, it's just a shame that we have to tell people this because.
That's extensive.
Check washing, everybody reminds remembers the movie Catch Me If You Can with Leonardo DiCaprio. We thought that was a thing of the past, but now since we have electronic banking. It's harder. Yeah, it's harder to see when a check has been washed. And the last trend that I want to point out is if you follow our crime watch, we are having a very big problem in East Goshen with people riding dirt bikes and ATVs on the road. We've gotten multiple locations. We're still trying to locate the people responsible. It's obviously a safety issue. Not only for the drivers, but for the children, and most of them appear to be juveniles on these vehicles. But the thing I like to remind the parents is if you think your children are involved, you might want to consider the fact that number one, that is an unregistered, uninsured, unlicensed, unlicensed operator on the roadway. When that individual is caught, the fine is going to be in excess of $1,000. And you, as the parent, will probably be responsible for it. Additionally, the vehicle in all likelihood will be impounded and you are going to incur additional costs. So we strongly recommend that you do not allow your children to drive on a highway or a roadway.
Wow, chief, that's a lot of stuff. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I just skipped the stuff I normally skip, but I thought that was more.
Much more important.
Chief, really quick, one quick question. Thanks for coming. You said there was the increase between 19 and 22. Crime increase, you said, in East Goshen.
21%. Yes, 20, there was a 20, actually for East Goshen, if you just look at the month of August, between 2019, which is pre pandemic and 2022, there was a 61%.
And what about the year, I guess, then in 2022, I'll ask what's the difference, the comparison.
Are you making a distinction between the proactive and reactive calls for service?
No, we lump all calls in together.
And and do you see any trends on severity of the calls for service or the, you know, by type?
I could do a more in-depth analysis, but I think generally when you try to look at month to month, it is misleading. And that's why I prefer to give data like comparing like the uniform crime reports at the beginning of every year, because that way then you're looking at a large enough data set that it isn't misleading. Because, for example, there was a 6% increase year to date for East Goshen between 2019. But just in the month of August, you had that big jump. So if you looked at it from a single month, it would be misleading. Well, I think everybody has seen an increase in crime. And what's unusual is that the crimes that we're seeing in East Goshen to some degree are unusual. East Goshen usually didn't have a lot of retail theft. We're finding that all of our townships are having retail theft and it's not a person from the community, it's professionals coming in. For example, there was one retail theft in East Goshen where in one incident, the individuals removed over $6,500 in merchandise in one incident. Well, they're just coming in and cleaning the shelves off. So.
All right, thank you so much. We're going to wrap this up with the emergency services report since we're there. Are you just about ready, Karen? Okay, come on up, Carmen, because you'll be quick.
Thank you, Carmen. It's not here, so he's allowing me to do the fire company. So I'm going to give you the reports for the for the fire companies and ambulances for East Goshen only. For Goshen Fire Company, our fire responses for the month of August were 19. Our fire police were 11. Our EMS were 194, which is still a great record. Malvern was 32, but further in the report, they say 37. I'm going to go with 32, which is 18.9%. And Good Fellowship Club for their ambulance calls are running their typical 59 9.1. I would like to mention to the board, I'll be on vacation. Then I go into surgery and I will be out until January or so. I've handled it with your code department with Derek, that he'll be taking over with Mike Holmes. So Fire Marshal will be covered in my in my absence. I will say I've received a ton of phone calls from neighbors and residents about burning. So they're finally getting the idea that we don't burn in East Ocean unless we burn in our confined areas according to our code. Must have been 15 of them. I don't keep track because it's minimal time on the phone. But the word is getting out that we have to follow the codes in East Goshen Township. If there are no questions, I bid you adieu.
Thanks for coming out, Carmen. Good luck with your.
You're lonely. Come visit me. My wife will need the break.
Thanks for coming out, Carmen. All right, let's jump back over to public hearings. How about that? Bill, you want to take it from here?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are you ready, Karen? Okay, great. As you mentioned earlier, we have first up on the agenda, a hearing for a zoning ordinance amendment to add, quote, "any lawful use not otherwise permitted in the township," end quote, to the list of uses permitted by conditional use in the I-1 light industrial district. I have a couple extra exhibit packets. Is there anyone in the audience that would like a copy of the exhibits? Right.
Okay, and as this is a hearing, Bill's in charge, and if anybody has any comments or questions, well, let us know when that's possible. You'll have to come to the microphone.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And as you'll note, we have a court reporter here this this evening who is stenographically recording this hearing for the record. So if you are going to speak, I ask, as the chairwoman mentioned, that you come to the microphone. Please state your name and address and speak slowly and clearly so that way her job is a little bit easier. So what I'll do is I'll introduce a couple of board exhibits. We'll take any question or comments from the board and then we'll open it up to public comment. The first exhibit is Exhibit B1, and that is a copy of the proposed ordinance amendment. Exhibit B2 is the public notice of tonight's hearing and the potential adoption of the ordinance. Exhibit B3 are the proofs of publication of that public notice in the daily local news on September 1st and September 8th of 2022. Exhibit B4 is the Chester County Planning Commission Review Letter dated August 30th, 2022. And Exhibit B5 is an email dated September 14th, 2022 from Township Manager Derek Davis to myself regarding the East Goshen Township Planning Commission's comments on the draft ordinance.
I do have a correction in that email, Bill.
Okay.
And so the one member, Mike Pagnanelli is actually should have been Mike Kozia, I believe, K O Z A. I will look up the exact spelling. But I got the mics mixed up.
Okay, very good. Thank you. As you'll know, there was one typographical matter that was pointed out by the Chester County Planning Commission that has been corrected in the final draft of the amendment. And the comments from your own planning commission. They, I think it was more along the lines of they weren't sure that it was necessary, but I'm telling you that it's a good idea to have something like this in your ordinances to protect you from legal challenges that could arise for not permitting a use that you were required to permit somewhere in your township. So with that, before we open it up to public comment, does the board have any questions or comments?
No.
No.
Is there anyone here in the public that has any question or comment related to the zoning ordinance amendment?
Okay. Is anybody on Zoom that might have a question or comment regarding this zoning ordinance? Thank you. So I guess now I just need a motion?
That that would be appropriate?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to amend Chapter 240 of the East Goshen Code and zoning ordinance in I-1 Zone District by condition or use any lawful use not otherwise permitted in the township.
Second.
Thank you. And there are no other, there was no other board discussion, is that correct? No other board information needed from the public on Zoom or in the room? Seeing none, I'm going to call a question. Those in favor of this ordinance? Thank you. Okay.
Okay, so we will close the record on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and on to the next order of business, a hearing in order to receive public input on Kim. I'm sorry. Sure.
You know, we closed the record already.
Thanks for catching us.
Russ Frank, 451 Gateswood Drive. I've asked this question numerous times before from the board. But since you're a new solicitor, I'd like to ask it again. You're all, we always use daily local news for public notices. The subscription has dropped down less than 60% of the original 100%, so it's about 40%. Is there any move within the state to move, change this to go to using constant contact?
Not constant contact, but I know there have been recent amendments that were proposed to allow municipalities to post it on their websites and other things to sort of alleviate that understanding that newspapers are not as subscribed to as they used to be. But as of right now, the law stands, we have.
To do that, okay. Do you see anything changing in the near future?
Probably not.
Probably not, okay.
Hey, Russ, I can add to that. There was a PSAT's email. Well, I'm on the newsletter. So part of that was I actually gave them numbers for past years, how much we had to spend on advertising to help try and buffer that argument.
Right. The problem is, is that the 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 news lobbyists are quite strong and they're vocal, so.
Yeah, I've sent several requests of our PA rep, never hear from them. So. Sorry, thanks very much.
Thanks, Russ.
Thanks, Russ.
Okay, so moving on, we have a hearing in order to receive public input on Comcast franchise fee renewal. Bill, you want to take this?
I will. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, as the chairwoman explained, this is a public hearing regarding cable franchise renewal pursuant to Section 626 of the Federal Cable Act, which sets forth a very formal process for franchise renewal. And just so that everyone knows what a cable franchise is, how many people do. The municipality authorizes certain cable companies to have lines in their roads and to conduct business within the municipality. And in return, the township gets a cut of the cable fee or the cable bill each month. It's a very small portion, but it's basically payment for them to be able to use our roads and have their facilities under our roads. So the township's current franchise with Comcast is within the industry norm renewal window. And the township is beginning the process of renewing the franchise. And this public hearing is part of that preliminary process. And in which the township is supposed to be reviewing Comcast and their performance and identify any future cable related community needs. So during this hearing, we invite the board to provide comment or questions and those here in the public as well. But in the interest of full disclosure, the township has hired special counsel to represent them through this process as part of a consortium. So they've hired experts to represent them that can do a much better job than I can because they do this all across the state of Pennsylvania. So what we will do, if you have any questions that we're not able to answer this evening, we will get them down as you see they're again being stenographically recorded. And we will get them to the proper people. And if you give Derek your contact information, he can get an answer back if we're not able to to answer those questions. So that being said, special counsel has given me certain instructions to follow, and I'll read that right now. So franchise renewal is the best opportunity for municipalities to assert their rights with respect to their cable operator and to main and to obtain important benefits in return for granting the cable operator the right to use their public rights away. These benefits include a state of the art cable system now and in the future, strong customer service standards, free services to community facilities, better reporting requirements from cable operators, maximized franchise fees, public educational and governmental channels, public educational and governmental capital support funding, legal protections of right of ways, and better mechanisms to enforce a franchise agreement. These are just some of the potential benefits available through franchise renewal. And now citizens have the opportunity to address these items or any other cable related items that are important to them. So before we open it up to any members of the public, do any members of the board wish to make any comment on a cable franchise renewal?
Should we mention how much money we get?
Yeah, it's about between 15, 60,000 for Verizon and Comcast each each quarter.
Thank you.
That was a great point to make.
I am not a member of the board, but I would like to say something on record about this because I've said this throughout the process. Derek Davis, Township Manager. I think it's really important that we continue to push, and I think this is more at the federal level if you look at the legislation on it. But the fact that we continue to, residents continue to get these services, albeit in another way now with the cord cutting. And in some ways they're getting more services, but we're still limited to that. You know, coax cable connection. So I really think there needs to be a push because this 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 could really in 10 to 20 years when nobody's having cable go away if we don't do something. So I think everybody needs to continue to talk to their mainly congressmen, congresswomen. Because I think the act was done in 1996 that made this possible. And I think it's really important that we as municipalities continue to follow that because as you see, the revenue is going down because of the cord cutting, but services are still the same. It's just a different technology. So, you know, I think municipalities should be getting a cut of that as well. So I just want to go on record and say that. Thank you.
Thanks, Jer. Do we currently have any services that have been offered for free by either Comcast or Verizon?
No, they stopped doing that. They used to provide, they used to provide boxes for townships. They did away with that.
Why did they do away with that, do we know, Bill?
I don't know, but I think you should talk to your special counsel and ask.
I think that I would like to.
Be the first question.
I would like that to be on the record then that I'd like to see Verizon and Comcast both offering townships free services. Once again, we do have our electronic signs that are located along Paley Pike here in our township. It'd be nice if we didn't have to pay a monthly fee to either of those providers for something that is really public service.
Agree.
I think I saw in some old contracts that we it seems like there was a possibility to have your own local channel, protect township news, and that was provided as part of service.
The issue with that is, just to interject, the issue with that is that is a possibility, but it comes with a significant cost to the municipality. Now, there are some grants associated with it, but Tridifern, for instance, and I visited their studio. It's quite an operation, but the grants don't cover the entire expenses. So it's quite a cumbersome process, but they do offer that as a service, but I definitely wouldn't say it was a free service.
Right, it's underutilized too.
That's unfortunate. Are there any other board questions or concerns that we can bring to our special counsel? Is there anybody here in the public room here present with any questions or concerns to bring to special counsel? Is there anybody in the Zoom room who has a question or concern regarding this cable franchise renewal? None, seeing none? We have one, if you will, please come up to the microphone. This is as part of this this hearing. Yes, your name and address.
My name is Tony Peretta. I live in Bowtree, 1601 Bainway. I wasn't aware that this was a topic, but I just so happened to have a situation which I thought would have been on my property, but it's actually on the Jason property where Verizon's old, if you will, copper wire towers that were installed in Bowtree, as an example, 35 years ago when the development was being built. With Verizon going to their FiOS platform, pretty much those towers are useless eyesores sitting out there. And if I had some trees removed and it won one call and when they came out, they said, oh, we don't care. You could cut through those wires. Because anybody who moves into your home can't get that service anymore. It doesn't exist. It has to be files. So my first question is, why do we still have the blight of these towers all over the place, especially when they don't work? And then for quite a while, we thought that that tower was actually sitting on the property corner marker. Because Sonoco couldn't find it. Just recently, within the past few weeks, surveyors that we hired couldn't find it. So it didn't exist. And a lot of the documents we've received from different entities showed the other four and that one not being locatable as far as the, was it 3H, 5H inch steel rod? Lo and behold, this last go around, they couldn't find it again, so they went ahead and tried to figure out exactly where the point was. And interesting enough, the point of where the corner marker is is between the Verizon box and the curb, which meant is I see it, the Verizon box is also outside of the utility right of way. Because that corner marker should be where the right of way, you know, ends if I'm not mistaken. So if someone has any other information to correct us.
So a couple, a couple of things. Preliminary, unfortunately, tonight's hearing is just for Comcast.
That's why I was saying before I got up.
That's all right.
This is important.
Yeah, I want to, I want to substantively address your issue. Most of the time, those boxes are on private property. They're not within the township's right of way. If it is in the township's right of way, that's something the township could look into. But generally, they're on private property and the utility has an easement with the property owner.
Okay, well, could I just interject something here? It's not for my property.
Understood.
It's for the homes on the cul-de-sac. And three or four or five homes get fed off that, I'll call it a tower. So it's, it has nothing to do with me, just like on my property in the utility right of way, there is the Comcast, I'll call it bullet. I'll call it bullet that's there that the township has. Crushed on virtually every winter plowing adventure for the past thirty five years. I have no control over that. We don't have Comcast. And I've actually had to come over the years to the township to get them to repair. That because Comcast. Their customer service doesn't recognize me as an entity. Nor should I get involved in that anyway. So that's a, that's a whole different aside. So so it's not a box for me.
Right.
It's a box for multiple.
So here's what we could do. Here's, here's what we can do. Chances are we can. We through the township staff, they can make an inquiry to Verizon or. Comcast, whatever, and say, what are, what are the status of some of these small towers on private property within our township? Are they obsolete? Do they still have a functional use? If the, if it's the latter. Or if if it's, if it's the former, if they're obsolete and they're not using them, is there any way that they can remove them? And then we can put something either in our newsletter or put it on our website to let people know that's what.
Well, I I I would like to broaden it, to be honest with you, and if we can ask Cohen once intake for questions. What? Legal requirement do cable providers have in order to? Disassemble and take away non operational. Infrastructure that they're no longer using and in turn. What sort of process, what does that process look like to go through that if there is a legal requirement?
Let me make a comment too. I believe that they said what you said to you. But please don't ever cut through wires.
Let's try to do one person speaking at a time, otherwise Karen's fingers are gonna fall off.
She's good though. Sorry, Karen. She's pretty nimble though.
Oh, your name and address, please.
Sorry, my name's Ruth Ann Stewart.
Into the microphone, please.
My name is Ruth Ann Stewart. I live at four oh five Schofield Line in Bowtree. So my question is to you, Mister. How big is a tower? Because I live in Bowtree. We don't have any towers in phase one. Oh, so it's not like twenty feet in the air.
They're green boxes. There are three foot high green boxes. That's what it is. But you can take that offline with with him.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions of anybody in the Zoom room? Regarding the. Franchise renewal. Comments. And seeing none, Bill.
Think you can close the hearing.
All right, I guess that's your.
Close the hearing. Thank you, Kara.
Thank you, Kara.
All right. So while Kara's. They seem to have stopped smoking. Dave, do you want to take the financial report and and take it from there?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. As of August thirty first, net of path throughs, the general fund had year to date revenues of eight million four hundred thirty eight thousand one hundred ninety dollars. And expenses of six million eight hundred thirty four thousand nine hundred eighty five dollars. So we have a surplus of one million six hundred three thousand two hundred and five dollars. The general fund balance as of August thirty first was seven million. One hundred thirty six thousand one hundred eighty one dollars. Our actual year to date revenue is finished two percent higher than budget and two percent higher than prior year. Building permits. Parks and rec programs and classes and our EIT revenue is what's driving that increase versus budget. The total year to date expenses are one percent over budget and five percent higher than prior year to date. Stormwater costs. Park program class expenses and EIT commissions are driving year to year to date expenses higher than our budget. The net result from opera, actual operations year to date June or. Year to date August is one hundred and twenty thousand higher than budget. In conclusion, I still believe that through eight months, we are on track to hit our twenty twenty two general fund. Budget expectations. We do have a one point six million dollar surplus. Yet the September through December last year expenses, the net results from operations were about a negative. One point one two five million. So we could have a small surplus this year, but I'd rather wait until we get a little further on. In the year and make sure we continue to monitor expenses.
Dave, that. August. The September through December. Increase in. Was that? Timing differences or? Were there surprises there or was that just a matter of straight line budgeting versus timing issues?
It's almost every year. The net result is negative. It could be five hundred thousand to a million typically. Over the last five years, we collect most of the EIT and there's a little bump in after August and November. But other than that, we we get really thin on revenue and it's almost all expenses.
Dave, I have one quick question for you. What's the update on the Portnoy?
Portnoy, we are, we've collected thirty percent of what we've sent them total.
Thank you.
It's about forty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Yep. Making some headwinds. We've closed out some people. That we hadn't seen any payment on in years and we've also signed up more and more people. With Chris to do automatic payments online.
At the cost of this to us.
Yes.
And moving on to the approval of the treasures report. There are no minutes. To go over this evening. You have the treasurer's report. So Dave, do you wanna?
Sure. Similar to the year to date, our our general fund revenue over this period of two weeks was driven by our EIT. Escrow recharges, permit fees and the park and recreation signups. Expenses were primarily we go September contribution, paving materials and equipment rental. Stormwater grades and ongoing operating expenses. Our capital expenses. Included forty nine thousand for the Hershey's Mill Dam construction and four thousand that was approved for our replacement bill folder and sealer machine. Our funds received were totaling nine hundred and fifty three thousand dollars for our second tranche. And we reimbursed West Goshen Sewer Authority for nine hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in West Townway pump station expenses.
How does that leave us with West Town? West, excuse me, West Ocean, how does that leave us with them? Are we, do we still owe them money?
Yes.
I I, how much money?
More than a million.
I I know that, but do we have an idea of?
I think it was one point eight total on our end. So that was the initial payment, so.
Yeah, a close to another million. Then there's some other miscellaneous capital expenses. Most of the other expenses have been taken care of.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the receipts and approve the expenditures as presented in the expenditure registering to summarize the treasure report.
Thank you.
Second motion.
Okay, so. Do we have any questions? I I I'm going to formally say that while I don't particularly care for this new format of the recording. I understand we don't have much of a choice and I do like the fact that it's given us. A little bit more information and. Things are clustered together a little bit.
Yeah, you'll notice we, Chris puts it together for me and the municipal authority is kind, it's on here because we can exclude it. But we kind of cross it out and highlight it and say, yeah, that's not for this board to worry about.
I think you'll get used to when you start looking at it as far as, as far as like coding numbers.
We're all getting used to it.
It's just, I don't care for it yet. I'm sure that I will like it in the long run, but.
Just relate to that, Michelle. Is there any way on the the individual sheets? That we can, in the fun number is on there. Of course, we know the general fund is fund one. I think sewer is fund three, something like that. But is there any way you can put an alpha on the sheet that says general fund sewer fund? Do you have a field?
Absolutely. Even if, even if not, we can.
In there that shows the different funds, but it's, you know, it's nice to say, okay, I'm in the general fund right now.
Okay. Are there any questions on the bills?
Just one.
Any on the board?
I just want to confirm that the. Payments for milling and the paving, I think one was in the two hundreds and the milling was around ten thousand, something like that. That that will involve ultimately at the end of the year and interfund transfer from liquid fuels to the to the general fund.
Yep.
We get, we get liquid fuels for. Road maintenance and paving from the state every year. So we get a separate branch and we keep a separate fund. But when those those monies are expensed in the general fund. As I thought, we would have an interfund transfer and reimburse the general fund from the liquid.
Yeah, it's about five hundred and fifteen thousand we have this year and not just paving and some of the stormwater costs will be covered. We cover street maintenance, street light maintenance, traffic signal maintenance.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I I would like to say they paved in my neighborhood and they did a really nice job. I want to thank Mark Miller and the whole crew out there.
I looked up for comparison, so West Ocean has a. They put theirs out to bid and they have a contract. And for roughly the same. Amount of materials and distance they would go. Their contract to Alan Myers was over a million dollars. And that's no change, change orders.
Yeah, I just want to boost on that for a minute to those who are listening, those that are here. Our public works department is an exceptional crew and I'm not saying that subjectively, but but. Quantitatively, and this is a great example. The the skills and the ability of the the crew. To. Perform the milling. They're renting the machine, but they're performing the milling. They're doing the paving. The the cost. Because the their labor is internalized into the budget. Is just as you say, it's dramatic. So it's a big, big savings for the township and they do a great job.
Yeah, we rent it, rent the thing for ten thousand dollars and. The guys take classes every year and just like they do the.
So are there any questions in the audience regarding the bills for for tonight?
Your memo. Fifteenth about the financial report. And all the other funds?
Yes.
I'm kind of looking at this very simplistically. But I'm adding up all the things that say fun bounce, fun bounce, fun bounce comes up to like fifteen point five million dollars. Is that money we physically have in our bank?
Yep.
Yeah, it's in, some of it's invested and some of it is in. Accounts that are more easily accessible. So that we have a cash flow for different projects.
Thank you, Ross.
Local government typically uses a multi-fund system. Some of the funds are enterprise funds like sewer and they they have to be funded by the. Services and the fees associated with them. Some are specialty funds that we create like the liquid fuels, which is an annual allocation I just referred to. We are a general fund and we have a capital reserve fund that plays into it. We have an operating reserve fund. These are all related to the general fund and contingency should we have an unexpected event. So that it's typical for municipalities to have anywhere from six to eight or ten funds. That are, some are independent of each other, some are proprietary and others are dependent upon the other, like our capital reserve doesn't exist. Without contributions from the general fund.
Are there any questions regarding the bills here in the audience or in the Zoom room? Seeing none, I'm going to call a question. Those in favor pay the bills. Under old business, we're going to continue the noise ordinance discussion. I have no comments, gentlemen. Do you have any comments?
No comments here.
My comments are that the current draft incorporates the robust discussion that we had at the last meeting. And. I'm going to make a motion that we. Authorize the township solicitor. Township manager to advertise. The repealing of chapter one fifty six of the East Ocean Code titled Noise and replace it with the new chapter one fifty six titled Noise and Nuisance. That incorporates the new language discussed in previous meetings and tonight. As well as authorize to advertise the removing of the noise regulations in East Ocean zoning ordinance.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I would real quickly just like to give a summary of the three changes, the three main changes that were made. After the August sixteenth meeting by Bill and he can say a few words after me if he if he wishes. But the lim, the limit on the ability to request no waivers, there was no limit before. We took that to four per year. A individual has to request it fourteen days prior to any event. And then adding toxic chemicals as a nuisance health hazard. So that was the the three main ones. And Bill, am I missing anything there?
Nope, that's it.
Okay.
I would like to make one procedural comment, though, because this is removing noise provisions from the zoning ordinance. It will go to the Township Planning Commission for review and the County Planning Commission for review. And then we'll invite Kara back for another hearing.
It'll probably be November.
Something like.
Are there any other comments from the board?
It doesn't need to.
Are there any comments regarding the noise ordinance here in the room? Or in the Zoom room? The only comment I'll make is I still disagree with the four per year. I think it still should be less. And I'm going to call the question. Those in favor of. Authorizing township solicitor to advertise the repealing of this code. Those against? Under new business. I mean, sport one, I was a name. Discussion on AJ Blazinski's chain and ownership. And possible authorization to execute consent to change control. So.
Give me to take that?
I do. Work for your money sometime.
We won't mind that invoice.
There you go, there you go. So sometime in August, Anthony Blazinski, the former owner of AJ Blazinski, Blazinski Inc. Approached the township. And informed them that he was contemplating the sale of his company. This was an equity transaction. However, this wasn't the the. This wasn't a transaction where the company would be going away. It was simply owning, changing the ownership of. AJ Blazinski Inc. and the company would continue to operate in much the same way or exactly the same way as it has been operating. And so the contract that the township has with AJ Blazinski Inc. requires your consent to that change. So they're here asking for your consent. I have assured, I've received assurances in writing that all of the same provisions of your current contract will remain in place. Like I said, AJ Blazinski isn't going anywhere. It's going to be the same truck, same people, same employees. It's just the ownership of the corporate structure will be. Changing to subsidiary of waste, it was Waste Connections Inc., which is a Canadian company. So it's multinational. So frankly, it's a much larger company than than who owned it in the past.
Bill, the 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 contract remains in force.
Absolutely.
And the the price won't go up.
Not at all.
How many years?
The, I think we, we said we were still in your first year of the contract. There you go.
Okay, thank you.
So the terms of the contract change, don't change at all.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I move that we direct the township manager to execute the consent to change of control document provided by AJ Blazinski.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding this? Please come up to the podium. Thank you.
I don't have any personal. Knowledge of. This Canadian company. But there was quite a bit of chatter on the neighborhood. I don't know if anybody has seen any of it. And. From other people's experience, seems like this Canadian company doesn't have a really great pattern. Record. Service is not of the highest quality. So if they're going to be selling to this company. Ownership is changing. I think we could certainly assume that our services are going to change and. Like everything else. We don't want to see it to go the route of the postal service because that is. Where it could certainly go if what we're hearing out there on the neighborhood is in fact true. I think what I didn't hear here in this exchange was anything regarding the quality. We know what we've had before. It's been excellent. You know, but as a, you know, tomorrow. You know, what is going to change and?
Well, we've been assured, sir, that that AJ is actually going to continue to drive the truck and manage the local people. And so we have hope that the the local management will not change, the local service won't.
Having worked in a corporate structure my entire life. That's great. Comment. The reality is that, you know, people don't go and acquire or, you know, call it what you will. For the fun of it. Over time.
Right.
It will change. And if anybody doesn't think it is.
We do have the ability. We do have the ability, um.
I think we need to.
To enforce, uh, performance issues if they're not performing. The fact that we know that the AJ Blazinski, um, group is going to brand is going to continue to operate through the terms of our current contract. That gives us as a board some assurance that the fine quality of service that they provide, it will continue. However, if there's deterioration that is, uh, substantive that we can, um, enforce. That would be something we would do. This said, it's a very volatile time. I'm glad we're not in a situation where we'd have to rebid right now in the environment that we're in. So in that regard, knowing it's just an equity transition or a transaction. That's at least stabilizing for us at the moment, given we have four more years on the contract.
But that was a bad expression, so.
Yeah. So that was a good point, Mike. The township's contract has specs that are about an inch thick. They're sitting on my desk and, and it's not short. Uh, so that details every level of service and everything they're required to do. And the township holds a performance bond, a certain amount of money to hold them to it. So if there are any issues, make sure you contact the township and we can go through and make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do under the contract.
Yeah, there's not been another carrier that could hold water or a candle to them. I mean, they put the cover back on your garbage can. You get your garbage. Okay, I didn't hear that. And, and I think that was an important piece of maybe what we need to make public.
Thank you.
You know, and we got something we could stand behind.
Thanks, Mr. Frer.
Thank you.
Uh, are there any other questions, um, in the room here regarding the trash service, uh, changing names and in the Zoom room? See none, I'm going to call the question. Those in favor.
I.
I. Thank you. And, um, next up is consideration of a resolution. This is to recognize October the twenty-second, excuse me, October of twenty twenty-two as childhood aware cancer, childhood cancer awareness month.
Yeah, very simply, Madam Chair, uh, American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids, um. They, they basically just contacted us, asking us to make this proclamation for October. And I put the, uh, resolution on the agenda, uh, just to, I, I didn't have a in-depth conversation with the board about it. But it was a simple enough resolution where I figured I'd put it on and, and see what happens.
And we can, if, if we adopt this tonight, um, I think we, we will, um, can we put this, uh, front and center on our webpage? So that people, uh, are tuned into it as well.
I will do that.
Yeah, good.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash seventeen. Uh, establishing October of twenty twenty-two as childhood cancer awareness month. Uh, I'm not involved with this specific organization, but I am involved with two other child cancer, uh, charities actively, um, raising money. It's a great cause.
Yep, second.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions regarding this on the, regarding this resolution on the board? Or in the audience? And so as there are no questions, can I go ahead and read the resolutions to the record? Is that how we do that?
Yeah, it's good to read.
Oh, okay. All right.
Want me to read it?
I know I did. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection Report, cancer's leading cause of death by disease among US children between infancy and age fifteen. This tragic disease is detected in more than sixteen thousand of our country's young people each and every year. And whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer. Many infants, children and teens will suffer from long-term effects with comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. An estimated four hundred thousand children adolescents are diagnosed with cancer globally each year. And whereas founded nearly thirty years ago by Stephen Firestein, a member of this philanthropic Max Factor Cosmetics family. The American Cancer Fund for Children, Inc., Kids Cancer Connection, Inc., along with Lions Club International, are dedicated to helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection, provide a variety of vital patient psych, psycho-social services to children undergoing cancer treatment. At Children's Hospital of Pennsylvania, uh, excuse me, Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, Shriners Children's Philadelphia, Nemours Children's Hospital in Delaware, the Children's Regional Hospital Cooper in Camden, New Jersey, UPMC. True Children's Hospital Pittsburgh, as well as other participating hospitals throughout the country. Thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsor toy distributions, family sailing programs, pet assisted therapies, positive appearance programs, laughter noon, laughter is healing, educational programs. KCC supercar experience and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Be it resolved that the board supervisors hereby declares October twenty twenty-two as childhood cancer awareness month. Resolved and adopted this twentieth day of September, twenty twenty-two.
Very good.
Thank you. I don't know. Do we need to vote on that bill? You'll make that final. Okay, those in favor of this resolution, I. Opposed? None? Thank you. Sorry, Doc. Okay, standing issues, Hershey's Mill Dam.
No, nothing this evening, Madam Chair, just still finishing up the punch list. And the big thing is we have to, by the end of the month, we should be getting the, uh, landscape architect. With the, the maintenance schedule. So we'll, we will.
Money wise.
We're under budget right now.
Uh, how much more will we have to pay?
Uh, possibly eighty thousand, something like that.
Okay. And the punch list, that's going to be done soon?
I would hopefully within the next month, yes. When we're sitting here in October eighteenth, I hope to say it's done.
Okay, good, good, good.
Come on up. Sorry. I know it's a pain. Take your time.
Uh, my name is Ron Kepplinger, four oh six Schofield Bowtree. Uh, I was the tenth, tenth house in there in eighty-six. I've been there thirty-six years. The, you were just talking about finishing up over at, uh.
Green Hill and Hershey's Mill.
Yeah, someone told me, I, I'd been by there and I saw you working on, I thought you were done. But someone had mentioned that they were done, but it's not, they didn't cut all the weeds and clean everything up. But that's the landscaping you're talking about?
Yeah, but I want to set expectations now. This was a passive sort of natural area. So there is going to be native plants and vegetations that people sometime are going to refer to as weeds. Um, mainly a lot of the maintenance schedule is going to be revolved around, uh, making sure the boardwalk is accessible and able to walk. Um, the landscape architect did assure us there's not much maintenance to go on because it is a passive area with the boardwalk. So it's not a situation where it's all going to get shaved down and, and made pruned and, and things of that nature. But we didn't get the maintenance schedule, so I haven't seen it yet.
It's not going to look like.
Not a suburban park, not a suburban park. This is going to be.
It's not like the one, oh, that they've got to do. They've drained it, um.
Milltown.
No, no, it's not River Road.
Reservoir Road.
Reservoir Road. It's, it's going to be different.
Well.
It's going to be different than that.
Yeah, the pictures, um, we're going to have to wait to see how the bids come in. That's, we'll talk about that one once, once we finally get our permit.
That's a larger project for sure, yeah.
But this, this whole area of the Hershey's Mill Dam, uh, location, it's all, uh, um, classified now as a wetland. So it's not as if we can go in there with mowers or anything else. And of course, that was not the original intent of what the Army Corps told us we had to do. Uh, after the pond was drained, it was then declared by, uh, I guess the DEP or the Army Corps that it was now a wetland. And so there were, there's only limited, um, things that you can do with it. You can't fill, you can't, uh, you can't excavate, you dredge.
We can make a park out of it.
You can't make a park. Thank you.
Yeah, so it's, it's a different setting.
Are you going to talk about next year's budget?
We did last month and we got a couple more coming.
We're going to be, we're going to be talking about that on next week. Yeah, we're, we're going to be talking about that next week.
Yeah, and you want to talk about it in here?
Oh, yeah, Tuesday, Tuesday a week.
Okay.
And we should be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Regarding the budget though, um, we'll, we'll get back to that to make, um, a request to put it on the website potentially to, to take a look at before you come in. So look forward on the website next week. Or this week rather, um, under Milltown Dam Project.
Do you want me to take that one? I, so, so he.
I, I want, I want so desperately to say something.
Well, Michelle, you have done everything you possibly can to, to again penetrate a bureaucracy that is very difficult to get.
Those of you who aren't aware, we're waiting for the DEP of the state to send us a certification. They've promised it to Michelle about five weeks ago.
Three, at least three.
We started back in April, but then we were waiting.
And we don't have it yet. So we can't do the work until we get that and they promised us.
There was an email a couple of days ago saying that it was still going through the signature process, but then it backtracked a little bit because it had to get engineer sealed before the signature.
Yeah.
So.
So that's where we are.
This is like the most valuable piece of paper floating around Harrisburg.
We're hopeful and that it's imminent. Um, under any other matter, um, I'm going to ask Derek, do you have anything on the Bowtree, uh, pond? Uh, excuse me, Maridale Pond, um, uh, celebration of sorts.
So I, I talked to Jason today about this subject. So our proposal is to get in touch with the Maridale Pond Original Committee. Um, have a couple of, basically a couple of options. So we, we can do a ribbon cutting in October and then we were going to propose two dates to them. And just as a backup, just to see how people feel, um, because October is not going to be as in bloom, so to speak. Um, we're going to get input if they want to wait till May and then propose two dates for May. I'm not saying they're going to want to do that, but, um, that was going to be the crux of the email. So that, that's so I, I will be reaching out to them and then we'll get feedback from them, the board. And then, so that'll be, we're looking at October twentieth and twenty-first. That's a Thursday, Friday at ten AM.
Oh, good morning.
Okay. All right. So we can, and then we'll float that by the neighbors then and whatnot. Um, and then also under any other matter, we do have the artwork, art, art walk coming up. Thank you for reminding me. On Saturday, please come out and, and support our local artists. There are going to be a lot of vendors here and they're going to be located here at the Township Building. And my understanding is also down at the park and somewhere in between. And at eleven o'clock on, um, Saturday morning, you could come out, do a little shopping beforehand. And then stop down at the, um, Goshen Quaker Friends and be there for our bench and, uh, marker dedication. And then continue shopping, so.
So there'll be like sixty-seven. In the park, on the trail and at the Township Building.
Yeah, last year was about thirty, wasn't it?
And you can also sign up for a walk challenge. The distance between vendors is one point two miles. We're trying to get four hundred people to sign up. Um, and there'll be actually a, uh, you, you can log on and, and your pedometers and then turn that in. And we're trying to hit a million miles of walking during the art walks.
That's great.
Very cool challenge.
Terrific. And then, uh, are there any other matters on the board? Um, if you have another matter, come on up. We'll, we'll call this public comment. While you're coming up, there are no liaison reports or reports of interest. Yes.
Okay, you may be aware of it, or again, you may not, but just recently with the news, uh, you know, with the quarterly newsletter coming out. I went in there to go ahead and sign up for the, uh, everything, uh, with the cord, you know, the, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Recycling.
Yes.
There's no way to sign up. There's no link. Uh, and where there was a image of a link, it's not a link. It's just an image of, of a link. So I don't know if that is something that was missing.
It was a bug.
Okay, okay, you say, well, okay, I got you.
Yeah, or perhaps, you know, it's still to come. I don't know, but I figured I would just bring it up because it's not there. And the newsletter just came out, what, two days ago?
I'll take a look at it tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Frer. Are there any other public comments here in the room? And come on up, Russ. Okay. And I see we have somebody in the Zoom room. Just a moment. I'll get to you in just a moment. I can't really see.
I got a couple of things I'd like to ask about.
Okay.
I guess, first thing is the, um, with the new race on the sewer. When does the third quarter and first quarter kick in? What is the actual date?
Dave is going to be the best.
It was the fourth quarter between the third and the first.
What, what date?
I, I don't recall the exact date.
The reason I ask is because. Sometimes they, I'm trying to make sure I don't do certain things where it's going to start getting into the water for the new budget process.
Yeah.
And I never could get an answer from, because I've asked this like years ago.
Now, Chris has it at her fingertips. She's, she's out sick today. I can find out. I'll, I'll email you tomorrow, Russ.
Okay, and how's the?
The website, whatever those date, close off dates are over the end of the quarter dates.
Wasn't everybody's build different dates?
I'm not on public sewer, so I.
Yeah.
But the, what we're hoping to do, um, with the new financial software is to avoid all of this. And hopefully next year, work with Edmunds and work with Aqua so that we can automatically import every, every quarter's, uh, data for the meters so that we just bill for that quarter's actual usage at whatever that amount of water is. So we don't have to say, here's an average of fourth and, and first.
So now you're going to go to a quarterly review of the sewer? What are you?
It would, it would change based on actual. That's our hope.
On quarterly? Because originally it was just the third, the fourth quarter and the first quarter.
Because we, because we have such a big lag between when we actually bill and the data that we get from Aqua.
But I, I asked that question before and they said, no, it's not going to go to, like what you just mentioned.
No, well, we should be able to get the information. There are other financial systems that are able to, you can get a file from Aqua, upload it to your system and that populates all of your actual usage each quarter. And that way the billing is applied directly to that quarter's usage.
And now, so now if you have gardens and pools, they're going to have to pay a higher rate for the summer months?
If you fill a lot more water, yeah.
And I thought that was why we went to a four and a one quarter. So people wouldn't be penalized for having gardens and pools. That's what it's been like for years in this place.
Yeah.
I mean, now you're making a dramatic change, especially since you're raising the rates.
Well, we didn't make a change yet, Russ.
But it sounds like you're getting ready.
We're, we're asking if it's possible to get actual usage. Yeah, and there's plenty of townships that, no matter what goes down through the ground, you get charged no matter what. Um, this just happens to be one which they've done an average and then people say, oh, I had a pool put in. Oh, I did this. I had a leaky toilet. And then we review those on a case by case basis and actually make allowances for those. Uh, this is one of the only ones that challenges that I know of that does that, but we do it currently.
So if we're so unique, why don't we keep it that way?
Uh, there's positives and negatives to both sides.
That we use a lot of water for. A lot of plants that we do. And we've been lived under the, for the past twenty-eight years that during that summer, when we put our pool in, do our garden, we're not going to see a rate on the sewer bill. Because that water's not going back in, that water's only going into the ground, not into the sewer system.
Yeah, it's a good point. I think, I think during the review, Dave will bring it up. We'll, we'll talk about this.
Yeah, this is, this is a discussion to be had. We haven't made any decisions yet, Rob.
Okay. How far are we going to take this, uh, EV, uh, project that I keep seeing on the, uh, some of these board supervisors, uh, planning commission meetings?
What project is that?
Yeah, like the other day, this woman got up there and talked about, sort of presentation.
She have the EV charters.
Yeah. Are we going to, are we going to go with that or?
Um, I, I, I'm not in favor of it. That's my, my opinion. So that's something that we haven't discussed at this point. It's something that the ESAC is going to probably come to us and, or they've come to us and they've, they've asked us to consider it. But that's not, it's not inexpensive. It's not without its environmental impact. Um, it's something that we have to talk about as a board. Before we can, before we can really do anything. But I'm, I'm against it, even though I have an EV, I'm against it.
Well, you, you have an EV, but you have solar panels on the roof.
That's right.
Uh, if we had solar panels on the roof, it would be acceptable. But people who buy an electric vehicle and then plug it in, in their garage and use electricity that's generated by coal, oil and gas, there, there's nothing green about that. Even the whole process of making the batteries.
Have a long way to go though. Exactly right. It's terrible. The, the, the countries that are mining lithium are oftentimes not doing it ethically, uh, environmentally, safely, um, or being careful with their workers. And so there are, there are, there are very complex issues.
Yeah.
That surround the EV, um, charging issue and.
For now, the board's interested in, and the Environmental and Sustainability Advisory Council is interested in encouraging businesses that want to put them in. And we did make a change of, for ordinance to allow signs. Uh, for instance, there's now a new charging station at this giant supermarket. There's two, two, a dual system there. And we made a change for ordinance to allow for the signs to light up. And we did some, some, uh, uh, design, uh, you know, characteristic recommendations and so on to make them not obtrusive to the environment. But in the, in the second. But and then, and the second thing is to make sure our codes would allow for, um, electrical charging for private residences. And apartment buildings if they decided to do that. Uh, and that's right now kind of where we are. We're not, we have not, uh, we turned down, uh, requests to, to put a charging station here at this building or in the park.
Great. My last question is that you did bring up the Mary Dell Pond. Is there a reason why they don't cut the grass anymore there? I mean, I noticed this like last year and never thought about asking the question till you brought up this pond.
It was part of the, uh, recommendations originally from the committee that they prefered that the, the open suburbanized meadow.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, would be naturalized for a number of reasons. One of them in particular is to reduce the Canada geese issue. Canada geese do not like to, they like to see where they are. They don't like to be in long grass, and I think it's already had a positive impact there. But there was also, uh, we also discussed it with the Public Works Department and and the committee about the maintenance of it. Uh, since it is a township, um, owned, uh, but it's essentially a stormwater facility. But, uh, uh, the asset is owned by the township and it's maintained. So it reduced the amount of mowing that has occurred there. And I know the residents that I've heard from to date are, are thrilled with the way it looks, but I.
It's usually cut twice a year.
Yeah.
It's cut, it's cut, it's cut at the end of the season and it's kind of the beginning of the, the, the growing season.
I'm seeing more and more of this occurring. And I'll give you a good example where there's, there's one that surprised me. But if you, uh, you go down Green Hill Road, um, to, uh, Phoenixville Pike and take the left. Uh, I think it's Christ Community Church on the right hand side, but on the left hand side, there's a, forget the name of the business, it's a marble place or countertop or something. But they had a strip along Phoenixville Pike there that was mowed for years. And this year they've let it go and they've naturalized it, which I, I think is great. Um, it's just, it's, it reduces the suburbanization. Uh, more, more, you know, labor materials, uh, et cetera, et cetera. So that, but coming back to Mary Dell. That was part of the reasoning, uh, then that the committee was, uh, you know, they kind of drove some of that and we were supportive.
I mean, it looks great in the spring, the, uh, yellow flowers, wherever they are. They look great. Now it looks like.
It's, it's, well, it's starting to die. It's starting to die off a little bit too.
Yeah.
They'll be mowing it at some point. Yeah, yeah.
That's it, thanks.
Great, thanks. And we have somebody else on the Zoom room, Steve, and I can't read your last name. Steve, would you tell us your first and last name and where you live?
Yep, Steve Benaka, sixteen oh one East Boot Road.
Thank you.
Um, just had a couple of things for you guys I haven't noticed recently. Um, one is the crosswalk on the East Boot Road, right by Watermark to follow the trail. Uh, into the development there. Um, just had a lot of issues with drivers not stopping for pedestrians there. Um, so I was wondering if there was anything we could do more with signage? Or having the police maybe monitor those areas a little bit more.
Is that going in the clock tower? Is that where we are?
Across the street, but yeah.
Okay.
Across the street. Is that our road, East Boot?
Yes.
Yes, East Boot, uh, uh, East Boot is town.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, Steve, I, what I can do is, I'd like to get a little bit more specifics from you. Um, so if I can get that, um, I mean, I could just give you my email now. Everybody knows it anyway. Um, yeah, it's, uh, D Davis at eastocean.org.
Okay.
And I'd like, I'll, I'll touch base with Public Works, um, on the signage, but I also would get this to Lieutenant Leahy on. Traffic enforcement because any of these issues always come back to enforcement, um, most of the time. So it's just a matter of getting more eyes on the issues for police enforcement. But if you can email me and then perhaps we can chat a little bit more and I could get more specifics on, um. The area, the specifics of the situation and and where the signage would be most helpful. So, um, if you can do that, i- i- is that a, is that an agreeable way forward with that one?
Yeah, for sure. And there is, you know, there is a, there are pedestrian crosswalk signs on each side of the road, um. That there, I don't know that the one is as visible because of some of the brush. But I, I feel like that whole intersection could be updated a little bit with, you know, like. Um, you know, crosswalk ahead, you know, uh, to give them a, an idea that it's coming up instead of it's just. You see the sign and you're already in the crosswalk.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, is there anything else?
Yep.
Yeah, and then the other one is, um, because I do a lot of walking on this trail. Um, I've noticed that it seems, it seems like a lot of the residents from Bellingham. They must have a no smoking thing on site there. Um, a lot of the residents have been parking in that small lot, uh, right across from the bees. And they're all disposing of their cigarettes right on the ground and there's hundreds. I just saw them today. It's disgusting.
Yeah, I've, I've heard, I've heard that before, Steve, and, uh, we thought that it might be some of the workers that go over there for their break and do that. And I thought we, it was just brought up, maybe, maybe it just was in.
It was at the.
In that hawk at the municipal authority meeting. Someone, somebody brought it up at our recent municipal authority building and I, or a meeting. And I know that our Public Works Director, uh, Mark Miller was in attendance. And they were going to look to put in, if nothing else, a, um, I guess a, what are you going, butt box or whatever it was to. Smoke tower or something like that. So, uh, to, with some attention is apparently going to go to that. Um, because I've heard, we, we've heard that before and that's, that's a good point. Uh, it is litter. And, uh, so we'll see what we can do and if that may improve it. And the other, then the follow-up would be if it doesn't improve, then we would contact Bellingham directly and and have a, a nice conversation with them.
I think we do that anyway, to be honest with you. I think, I don't think it's a bad idea. Just have a conversation with them and do it anyway.
Yeah, and, and I, I don't know it as a fact, Steve, that it's, it's some of the staff that go over there for their break and do that. But that was, I think that was what was shared at the municipal authority meeting.
Yeah, they're doing a lot of construction, I think, too.
Oh, that's right, there's construction. That could be part of it. So we'll see what we can do on that one, Steve.
Yeah, what I've, what I've seen is it is a lot of definitely residents and, you know, people wearing the Bellingham uniform, uniforms as well. Um, so I wasn't sure too, because I've seen a lot of people smoking at the park and I wasn't sure if that was, if there was any type of. You know, like ordinance or rule in regards to that, or if that was okay in all township parks.
Yeah, we could.
We, 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 and we, if somebody just raised a question whether or not we could declare that a no smoking, um, location, uh, that's something to look into.
I think that it's not safe for the bees.
I think there are certain issues with that, but we can certainly look into it. And I know there are signs, young ones at play. And there are certain programs and grant funding that available for signage.
Well, he brought some further attention to it, Steve, so we'll, we'll see, we'll, we'll, we'll see what we can find out and see what we can make some improvements there. It's a good point.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
I'm, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the bees, though, with the cigarette smoking there. I mean, that's, you know.
They use. Well, you smoke to calm them down.
Yeah, they, they may. It calms them down.
But.
I could have sworn I saw a sign. Marlboro on one of the beehives. I, I don't know.
Bees don't smoke tobacco.
Could have sworn.
You people. All right, uh, there are no other questions or comments. I'm going to go ahead and, um, say word number sixteen, Cody.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Thank you for coming.